Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Alan. Call work session in order. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Everyone had time to look at the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any changes or comments? We will. Only thing I have is on the probation, the private probation, I will add that. Robert will talk about it. And the work session.
I think we need to, but I see there's already something on here for the fire protection agreement. But we need, we need to...
Let's just talk about that. Amazing what you're talking about, you know?
Don't sound dead.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, on our previous minutes, our previous meeting, any questions or comments? I know you've had those for a while. No, nothing? First now, status review, we'll look through that. We've not had any major changes. Like, there's been a change or two with the jail.
It was an aberrant.
Well, it is. You know, it seems like it's a regular thing with this department. Any comments? Okay. Move down to number four. Board of appointments and proclamations. Proclamation one is the winter weather emergency preparedness week, November 26th through December 2nd. Something we, I think we've done last five years. Everybody found that? Resolution R-30-17, Board of Assessors report of Lamar Lowery. More than a good member, he's missed very few meetings. Everyone found that?
Yep.
Okay. Move down to just C. This is our EMS Region One Council. Alex Case has served him at a number of years. This is a reappointment for him. Everyone found that? Move down to D. That's resolution R-31-17. This is EMS Region One. I'm sorry, I didn't start that. Move down to number eight. Water and Sewer Authority. This is a reappointment of Peter Pullen, Dr. Pullen. He's missed very few meetings, stated he's served for a number of years and he probably missed a couple of meetings. A very good board member. Everyone found that?
Yep. We did. North Flisfield Regional Commission.
This is the reappointment of Peter Savelli.
We must talk about that one.
This is, I'm sure he'd be glad to be...
Yeah, he was.
He's, he's...
He was.
Peter, I don't know if I'm meeting that he's missed really. I got, I got, I've never missed one and he's, I was there. He represents the sector. Everyone found that?
Yep.
Resolution, I'm sure, Board of, Board of Assessors, this is something we've been looking for. And Scotty has zero luck. I've asked a couple of people to be on the board and no one wants to, that I've talked to that will go there. It's just a hard board to actually reach out and ask someone. If anyone in the audience, you know, knows of anyone that we're going to serve on our tax assessor board, that's what we're talking about, we have a slot open for that. We try to fill it with each end, you know, each end of the county have a representative, but we're not having any luck at all when we send them out and that's where they're... So, you know, we've made every effort, so really we can reach out to other parts of the county if we have to. If anyone wants to come by the commission office, we can tell you what you need to do to be on that board. It's pretty, pretty demanding, especially when tax approval time comes. All right. Move down to approval of our SPOLOX capital equipment, West Brow Fire Department, you here?
Yeah.
As we all know, it's in trouble with one of the trucks. This is the main truck. First, and they have found the used truck to replace that with. I'll let you go into the details of where it's at and what it is.
The truck's out of the land, Florida. It's one of those same kind of trucks that we talked about the last time, ten years of service, maximum life on it. Bigger departments, that truck is retired from that department and moved on to another truck. It's a 2004 model Pierce Quantum. It's got 83,000 miles roughly. It's got 12,505 hours total, only 505 of that's on the pump. And there's 9,000 something hours of idle time, which is just sitting somewhere. It's got a few small issues, nothing that's major. That isn't fixable easy. As far as the pump goes, the pump is pumped up strong, the engine was strong, transmission was strong. And this is to replace our engine, current engine 30 that's having a transmission and pump issue.
And the pump is a strong, is a...
It's a larger pump.
Yeah, it's heavy on the eyes, so. Right. And you had, you had a diesel person there with you when you checked it out?
Uh, yes, Mike. He's a, that serves by business mechanic.
What about that transmission, Mike, was it the same good?
Yeah, drove good and everything, everything seemed to check out pretty good. Didn't have no, I didn't see no major leaks, they're the most common. I was driving the highway, just going to bring some... But hard over rough, it's a good, strong running truck. It's good, everything.
And that Allison is good.
It's a good, it's a good transmission.
It's Cadillac, you know?
Yeah. And that with a Detroit engine, one of the older ones, that's a, that's a lot stronger engine. A lot easier and cheaper to work on.
Yeah.
Plus, I think it's a lot better than most of my other engines, I believe.
I know you've been looking, you've been looking for a long time for a truck and find that, that's a good deal. In fact, if you look at, if you look at prices, and I did do that, you went in some of the books.
This right here is probably, you're looking at probably about anywhere from an 80 to 150,000 dollar truck sitting there. That's what you're looking to score on your sales.
And usually, you know, it's strange, you wonder why it's out there, why not? But, you know, you've got departments that trade every two years, sometimes every three, every four years, you know, regardless. You know, our cities, you know, that's amazing, you know, the deals you pick out.
Yeah, this one's not at a fire truck dealer, it's actually a truck dealer.
And they don't have a...
They don't really know what they have.
Robert, you got any comments?
No, these SPOLOX, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Going to Dawn and say what SPOLOX looks like. When, when do they want it? I know they've held it, I know y'all have been down, looked at it.
We've had it held for two weeks. Our two weeks up is today.
You gotta let them know something tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll have to get it this weekend.
My only question is, we've got all these trucks around the county that's been bought with SPOLOX. Is there a truck sitting in the county that the county already owns that could be transferred to them out?
I wouldn't know that as far as how that works because we're seven individual departments. I mean, you guys know how that works better than I would.
Mechanically, mechanically speaking, you know, the only, only over, overs, I guess, you know, we don't take, as far as trucks, you know, having an interest cut. They have a pump on it, from what y'all explained to me, and top of the guy that does the pumping, that's our case. There's not, there's not a truck that we have in our, in our fleet that's on the county that would even come comparable to that truck.
There's a lot of truck availability, or state trucks anywhere.
Well, they've, they've got more trucks that seem like in there. Some of those trucks are trucks that they, that's not even insured. It's their, it's their trucks, they bought them with their own money back years ago.
But you know, I'm saying, we should spend a lot of money and carry on with a lot of trucks.
Yeah. And the truck that they're turning in will be sold immediately, you know, when y'all meet up next week. It'll be put on good deal in the road, you know? And if we looked at those trucks, what they're selling for, probably will be able to get around 20,000 now.
Yeah, it'd be pretty close.
Just real close to.
15, 20,000.
Just looking at, yeah, some of the ones that have sold. So, you know, you'll have about 9,000 in truck, probably, you know, with 50,000 back. You got anything else?
No, I don't.
Don, you got, we talked about this last...
Yeah, we have 100, projects, we have 32,000. But, but we have the debt services 162,000. So, we have a debt service payment coming up, interest only, on the city bond and the two IDA bonds, Series A and Series B. But it's interest only.
Yeah.
We were sitting here discussing, thinking it's around 40,000-ish. So, we have to accrue that money first.
Okay.
So, outside of that...
Is that now 153?
That is at 165, so we, the rest feels, give away there. I think it was what South State that we bought it from Randall, Bracken Trucks.
Yeah.
Back in July, so it's, you know, we're trying to stick to about the same amount.
Yeah.
For each department.
That'd be...
I like everybody's time. We hope that when we go put it on the go, they'll just see we can get it.
Put it right back in.
Hopefully, it'll go like everything else we put on there.
What was the...
29.
Yeah, right there. 29. All right. The, this is something we, you know, we need to, we need to complement, I mean, some we've got, like the playground equipment at the recreational area. That's something that we're going to have for the full spring. You know, exactly, we've had a whole lot of head for cause of the, my building insurance. And that's something we need to be, you know, putting, thinking about. A lot of kids use that part. And also, you know, we've, we've went across this, we've actually got probably the third of it, I guess, of the, of electrical on the lighting. A third of that's already been installed on the poles, you know? But the lighting, the baseball, soccer and football fields by the summer. Next time we...
And we did that out, if you remember back, long time, two years ago. Busco would have wanted it in our neighborhood, I guess.
They did.
And they've held the price for two years. We just sent you that one about two hours ago, said that it's going to change December 31st, but I told him, it's fine. That's just part of it.
But we're, you know, we're trying, we're trying to do it in phases, you know? Phase one, you know, we got, we got all the electrical in and all the pole mounts set, so that's a big, that's a big thing out there. Just want to put that on the table. Let's see here now. Also, Dave Water and Sewer may be coming to us in the next month or two. We've got some issues with, this is on the special, because we did allocate some squash then on the lookout mount pump station. We've got those pumps, one of them been replaced, the other one is, is rather than a burden being replaced. And he, he missed it on, and also we talked about water, we were meeting today. So, that's something, you know, in the next few months, it's going to have to be probably replaced, you know? He's asking us to refund portion of that. And so, we'll, we'll talk more about that next, next meeting, but we know what we stand at on, on pump station. Other than that, that's pretty much everything we got. You got anything?
The old board.
Well, that's something to...
But that's phase.
That's phase, that's phase work, you know? We've got a lot of private money that's been put into it. And that's something, of course, that will, we have not put before, you know, the children and the parks and I went, but it's just something that, that is going to happen. It's really, it's a good structure and we can't let it just go. Plus, we got, I didn't realize we had as many attorneys on police space over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's definitely revenue is not going to be hard to, you know, actually come up with to actually maintain it and pay the power bill and line and water bill. You know, that's, that's a good thing. Let's move down to six. Resolution R-34-17. This is a agreement with our public defender, he's here tonight.
Mr. David.
As I said, he's got plenty of pro bono news for us.
Or sonny bono either one. Yeah. It's that time of year again.
It is.
I'm here asking for a renewal of my annual contract. And I've submitted the contract and the budget figures. There are no changes in the contract itself from year to year. The only thing I've changed are the names to reflect updated information there. The budget was previously submitted and that's going in as an attachment. I've asked y'all for a little bit over 100,000 this year as a, your pro rata share of the thing. The total overall budget is right at 1.6 million, including state contributions and all of the county contributions.
That's for all counties.
That's for all counties and the state.
That's everything.
I actually was able to get another attorney funded by the state this last year. The general assembly coughed up some money for public defenders for juvenile court primarily. But they didn't give enough for every circuit around the state. But I was able to get our program at the top of the list to get somebody from them. And that's, that's actually the money that I used to hire Jennifer Hartline, who's from Dan County and is covering the Dan County office for us these days and doing a great job. So, you know, we're, we're doing fine, we're holding our own. I wish I had as many lawyers as the DA, but I don't think that'll ever happen. You know, the biggest problem we're running into is overlapping court decks again. And there's nothing you can do about that. That's just dealing with the judges. I'm not going to get into any of the details of that, but as you know, there've been some issues between our judges as far as scheduling.
Still going on.
Still going on.
Still happening.
And we're feeling a lot of the backwash of that. But, you know, we're doing okay. We'll maintain, we'll make sure your business gets done properly. I think the last few terms, we've been able to complete everything in Dan County without having to go even one full week. Not, never mind two full weeks, which of course saves you a ton of money on jurors when that can happen. And it's not all us, but certainly we do our part on that, trying to get our business done as expeditiously as possible. So, we would ask you to give us another year to keep taking care of your business.
We appreciate you. We appreciate you because ever since we brought you on here as a, as a public defender, you know, years ago, you've been real... You've been, really been good on your budget. You've been right on the money, if it is or that have been under budget.
Well, I appreciate it. It's important to me. I, you know, I, and I take my job very seriously as a steward of public money and that's a big part of it.
Robert, you got any questions?
No.
Alan?
No.
Don, you got anything to add? We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Move down to number seven. This is the resolution R-35-17. It's a minimum budget minimum credit, like $2,017. That you go into that?
Number seven on the second page of CLEA. Basically, what this is what we've been talking about for the last two, three months, that we received payment on this...
First thing you owe.
Give Home Loop from FEMA and GEMA. And that's 241,180 dollars. So, we increased revenue by amount, we increased expense that amount, which will help offset that expense that was already sitting there.
Yeah.
We're going to try to get more out of them.
Possibly we will.
This year with the hurricanes.
Well, I don't know what we'd have done if we hadn't had the help, you know, from the state, especially on, you know, on emergency like that right there. And if they did, and the state stepped up like they did this. Any questions on that, Robert?
I'll just play my broken record. Don looked at me like I supposed to. This is 241,180 dollars going in that we have received from the federal government, from FEMA. It will go in and it will increase our budget by 241,000, but that money is already spent. So, at the end of a year or four years, it will look like we spent more money than we originally set a budget for, if you look back on that original budget. So, I just keep reminding people of that so they understand this is money that has to go through our, our books and the bank books, but it's money that was spent months ago that we're just now getting back. And thank goodness we're getting back.
Just a wash.
It is.
But it's still got to sell.
But it makes that, it makes that budget look like you took in a million, you spent a million too. So, you're overspending. We're not overspending. We're doing the right thing and we've got to show the money going in, in the middle of a, of a year, as it happens to be.
Correct. Everybody found that? If you got any comments?
No.
All right. Move down to number eight. This is resolution R-36-17, disposed of surplus county property, pad eight.
Back of pad eight, two Ford Crown Victorias, both 2010s. Miles validated, once.
Pretty extreme miles, and straightened four miles.
The unit 133 has 133,200 miles and unit 102 has 224,530 miles. Not bad on a Crown D, so. So, anyway, those will both be handed to Govmules pending your permission.
Put them on. Same again.
All right, move down to number nine. This is ordinance 12-07-17, amendments to Soul Rose and settlementation, possession and control orders. Don, go into that, this is our...
All right, Robin.
You're the one that's been dealing with this.
What this is, when Dan County became a local issuing authority, we agreed to amend our ordinance from time to time to comply with amendments that the state made in their statutes. And so, they've made some very minor changes, but nevertheless, we, we need to amend ours to reflect the changes that the state has approved here. It had to do with the definition term, but rather than anything else.
We discussed this last meeting.
We did.
This is our second rating evidence.
That's correct.
So, you're off immediately?
Yes.
But they don't understand. Okay, number 10. This is an ordinance to establish city-county joint historical proration commission. Don, you've been working on that?
We have.
That's an update on it.
We, I have included again the copy of the city's ordinance. And so, we're looking at the model ordinance, which will update both the city and, well, it'll update the cities and establish the counties. But we're going to try to write that together. And so, we're still in the draft process. We don't want to rush this and there's no reason to rush this. So, we're just trying to make sure that we, you know, if it's four members county, three city or however, in what parts of the area, that's, that's where we're talking about now. We talked about this effectively, this is the work for House Preservation Committee. So, anyway, we're just, it's a topic that I...
Also, I want to bring this up here, Robin just dropped this yesterday in the light. It's time for the renewal of our, the probation services, private probation services. And Robin dropped this to me yesterday. This is a renewal, a one-year renewal with Tony Moore with probation services. And one year, you know, we'll start reviewing it every year, so it will be a year to year instead of a five-year. It was five-year.
I think the previous one was about...
Was a five, I think so. We, this is something that needs to be January, January 1st deadline.
The current one expires and so what this agreement would do is it's a one-year agreement with potential renewals for four additional one-year terms.
But we could cancel, or they could cancel it with a 30-day notice prior to it.
That's correct.
Y'all understand what this is? I mean, you know, I know you should because we get calls. I mean, you've missed, everybody finally, we're redoing it for one year.
Yeah.
It'll be fine.
That's Georgia probation services.
Georgia probation services.
All right, more.
Okay.
Just want, one other word on it, that is actually three different agreements, there's one with both Superior Court, Public Court and Master Courts.
He handles all courts.
That's right.
Okay, this is, just for information, this is the agreement of a fire protection rescue services, the contracts coming up for renewal. This is something we called in January, January, February, first quarter. Yeah. Yeah, so we need to, we need to start, yeah, we need to start meeting and working on that, on that contract. But there's going, there is some adjustments we're going to do and I'm sure they've got some things going on to take the test.
It expires March 31st, so I'm, I'm, it's just all here for, to get the ball relevant, so.
Yeah. We have had, the Admiral Beverage Board has had a request for a variance from the golf course over in Milton. What is his name, is it Trenton? No, he doesn't change that. Trenton Golf, the Trenton Golf, you should hear it, Kessler's, now Trenton. They're wanting to, on the beverage, the liquor license. And that's something, have you been brought in on that?
I have, I've spoken with the clerk of the ABC Board about that. And, and the specific request, I think, attached to that, of course, it'll be a decision to be moved to ABC Board, but it seems like if they're wanting on-premises consumption, that's going to be difficult to fit within almost possible of their ordinance. But I had to thought back today that they could get, and I would suggest this for the ABC Board to look at, if they actually want an off-premises license, which would mean that they, but as I understand, his goal is to sell beer and wine to golfers there. Not necessarily to have a restaurant or anything like that.
No food, they, they don't want a bar or anything, they want to have mental and food.
That's great.
Well, as he says, they've got an empty...
That's great. So...
According to letters, just beer.
Right.
According to what's here, it's just...
There you go, said beer.
And so, I haven't brought in that and it's, and I, I think the ABC Board needs to take a look at that and see if that's something that he would be interested to, to inhabit. It would be essentially be an off-premises license, which would not allow them to drink now actually within the clubhouse, but, but the other stuff would make concerns, I understood. I mean, when I say other stuff, people having alcohol beverages on the golf course, I think is what I think is making concerns, so.
You're working on that.
So, there's different possibilities, but we're, we're not really coming to an agreement yet.
And Don also has here that there is historical counters on sale. That's something that the, Donna Street, I've been working on, and there's really not...
They sold out today, but we'll have more. When Donna gets back, it's more.
You don't have one to show anyone tonight, I guess.
I do have one back there, so I can be good at it.
They're good, they've got some, a lot of black and white pictures of Trenton back years and years ago. It's some of them I've never seen in the public, pretty good.
But we're selling them here in our office and at the library, when Donna gets back.
We sold fourteen today, so.
Yeah, because they just started, I mean, she just started making the last, last week, you know? So, it's really good. I think they're $10, they might give $10.
The proceeds go to the historical society.
Okay. Anything else, Don, you want to, you want to do something on this?
I think we're good.
Okay. All right, we'll, anything, you want to bring anything else to the table? Or six? No? We'll go ahead and we'll adjourn, take about a five-minute break or so, and we'll, we'll get going to our regular meeting. Bye. We do have some coffee and I would, Don, cookies.
I'm going to have some.
Appreciate everyone being here tonight. As always, before meeting again, we ask for the coffee, ladies and prayer and prayers relations to flag, everyone please stand.
And as always, as we pray, remember the family.
And as always, as we pray, remember the families that lost loved ones since our last meeting. I know the day before our last meeting, Brandon lost his mother-in-law and, I mean, his mother and Ted's, uh, father-in-law passed away this week, so we're gonna die in, the rest of the family. And especially the folks in California, and I'm telling you, if you watch those fires, I just can't imagine being in the middle of what they're in. So all the way over here, we pray for them and ask God to send them some of the rain and we're probably gonna see ourselves. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for just being with us as you have in times past and blessings as you have, even through the troubled times, you've always, Lord, helped us to make a way. We pray tonight especially for those, Lord, that have lost loved ones and we just ask that you would continue to bless them and comfort them. We pray for the people on the other side of our nation tonight in California, so many people that are losing their homes and everything that's going up in flames. We just pray, Lord, that you would somehow see fit, uh, to move as you can. Father, we pray for our nation tonight and all the turmoil that it's in, but let us realize too, at the same time, that we live in the greatest nation on the face of this earth. We're blessed above measure and, Lord, we just pray that you would help us to realize that every day that we live. We thank you for our protection here in our county. We thank you for our law officers, Lord, in our city and our county and state, and we thank you for our fire protection and all that we have, the things that we enjoy to live where we are, we just praise you for them. And Father, we pray now that you're blessed as we go into this meeting, that, Lord, everything we would do and somehow, Lord, would be the best it can be for the, every citizen or at least the most citizens of our county. And, Lord, just bless everything that we do and let us be a blessing for you to others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Before we pledge allegiance, I did miss Karen, Karen Gass. I know everybody's got real familiar with her over the last, uh, well, it's a long time that she's gone to battle with cancer, but she did lose that battle, so remember her family and her children. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Robin. This is a regular scheduled meeting in Dade County Commission, which takes place at the same time, first Thursday of every month. Professor Knowles, the meeting was given at our legal awards, uh, in the hall, in Senator Holfes. This time I do need a road talk. Schmidt?
Here.
Pittman? He's absent tonight. He had to work. Mr. Goff?
Here.
Bradford? Here. Mitch, we want to list over your committee report.
The only thing I've got, every time I mention G-Dot Roadwork, something happens, it's post-pub or whatever. So I give you no start date, sometime in the future down the road, the, the Doobie Loop, at the Doobie Loop where the bridge crosses the freeway is gonna be raised. Okay, like I said, hey, we'll give you no dates because every time we mention the ties, it's got post-pub and post-pub. It won't happen, they say.
When you least expect.
Yeah, when you least expect.
Said in two thousand eighteen.
And the biggest thing there is, it might affect, the house will affect the, uh, five minute extra drive to most, or some business of a way down. We in, you heard what they say.
According to what they said at that meeting, uh, now, you know, the bid, they're gonna let the bid, uh, in February, March, you know, and what that means, you know, the contract will come in and, and it'll probably be the last, and they said probably it'll start, probably the dead of winter next year. That's about what it is, the way they did, so, you know, probably around October, November next year, but that's something to be, we'll, we'll just have to wait a few years. Uh, Robin?
Well, looking at our splash numbers again this month, they are down from last month on both lost and splash, uh, neighborhood of nine, between nine and ten thousand dollars. Uh, we hope that's, we always have the hope that's gonna get better. Uh, starting missing a little closer because in about a month, maybe, uh, maybe five weeks from now, our, our legislators will go back to Atlanta and they'll start all over again. I think I reported here a couple of weeks, a month, maybe a month or so ago, that all the, uh, candidates for governor were gonna stop unfunded mandates, you know, start empty that, if they don't give them, they don't have to pay them. And, uh, I still say when pigs fly, that'll happen, so don't look good. And, uh, but just talking to somebody here between our break about some of the things that they're beginning, uh, to push down now, to even volunteer, like, we're still in the process of finding out about it, but to our volunteer fire departments and things like that for certain funding and certain things, uh, that, that they're beginning to push down. Uh, we've got things coming up with the law enforcement compensation, uh, committee that the governor form. I don't know what that's gonna do, but you can bet there's gonna be things that are gonna come to the county, uh, if, if passed by the legislature, unfunded or underfunded mandates. So keep an eye on those things and I'll do my best to try to keep an eye on all everyone and see what's coming through, the hot topics to call, we're always able to deal with them a little better, uh, through the lobbyists that are down there. So that's coming up in a, just like I say, in about a month, they'll be back in, in Atlanta again, so it will start. Must've been pretty quiet, but there's a few things been going on that, Mitch was talking about G-Dot, I, I wanna thank G-Dot for what they done last week, that they came out, the tree came across the highway at one thirty-six and it was an accident there. They came and cut it out the road and I can't believe this, two days later, I called and came and went up the old mess, which is very, very, you know, it took about three years to get one thirty-six paved. Anyway, though, I wanna thank them for what they done there. And, uh, we had, uh, a hundred ninety-one work orders and we have a really good work crew, even though they only had a hundred ninety-one, they do a lot of other things when they're free to do, clean out ditches and clean out culverts and stuff like that. So when they do have a project, it does help a lot. And another thing for the Vietnam veterans, if you have, I need to see the representative, he will be here the twentieth instead of the twenty-fifth, this, this time, it's the third Wednesday, the fourth Wednesday. He's been having quite a few people show up and, uh, it has been beneficial to our area. So if you need to see him, he'll be here. And we had four hundred sixty-four tons of garbage this month. Uh, you wonder where all this garbage comes from? That's a lot of garbage every month that we have in one circle of county. And, uh, and if you haven't been down to see Rising Pond Baptist Church, it's, uh, shoot, Christmas show is great, if you go by and see it, just come in Sunday, start at seven, give a chance to put in that away. And another thing I'd like to say is, uh, today's Pearl Harbor Day. And if you know of anything, you need to thank them. Uh, there were twenty-five hundred people approximately killed during that time, in that one day at Pearl Harbor, so if you're out in the cities, guys, we appreciate you. Guys, give us some friends that we happen to be here tonight. That's about it for me.
Okay, good report. I'll start, it's been a busy moment. Start with this, uh, meeting that DOT had at the library the other night, uh, that was pertaining to the Doobie Loop Bridge, which is a, a bridge that's north of Trenton, second bridge there. And, uh, they are gonna be, uh, top of them, uh, now, other projects in the county are gonna actually raise, uh, every bridge on fifty-nine from that bridge south, uh, except Trenton, Trenton's already high. And they're only gonna raise some of them on the four inches, some of them they raise a foot. And the reason being is, is the, uh, house requirement evidently on, on the eighteen waters or restrictions of chains, you know, because they are getting, he said there's several bridges that's got marks under them already with an accident session. I didn't know that. Seventy-foot, three inches. So, uh, that'll happen in the next two years, so they're gonna do this one first and then they're gonna, and it'll be followed before it's over, there'll be a two-year project, so we'll, but they'll keep everyone updated on that, I'm sure. Uh, met with, uh, we went to the, uh, meeting with Cryconny Hospital, actually, or Corner Sun. And, uh, as most of you read in the paper, that's a big deal, not only for Catusa and Walker, but, you know, for people that live here too, the memorial's taken out. I think it's a good, a good move for memorial and it's definitely a plus for, uh, for Catusa and Walker County, uh, that's a, that's a major provider. I'm just glad they're working out, you know, it's not just going like, uh, the, uh, the N-Tech, which is, uh, the, uh, people that are doing engineering on their dam, I don't look out now, look out like them. Yesterday, we got the final paperwork, final report back at the office here and, uh, had a conference call with the safety of people, uh, and such, N-Tech and, of course, us and we had a couple of people in Atlanta there from EPD on, um, we're setting a meeting with them, probably the third week of the session of legislation. Reason people, reason we're doing that is because we can have our senator and representative with us and that, that will, uh, actually decide whether we can lower the lake, bring it down to a category two and, uh, we can, uh, actually, it'll be, it'll probably save about three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand dollars of, of money, uh, that, uh, we would have to do to actually keep it up as a category one. This has been going on for twelve, thirteen years, I guess, you know, so hopefully, hopefully we can bring a, an end to this and prepare, do what, do what prepare we have to and going with. They will not let us breach the dam, some people said, why don't you just breach the dam and drain the lake? That's, uh, that's out of question for EPD. Even though we don't own the lake, we own the dam, uh, the aquatic line that they said we would lose, they won't do any, talk this about. Uh, we could probably fix it in about an hour, about two hours, we could drop that, uh, cut that dam to the island, you know, but that's, that's not, that's out of question. So anyway, we, we can, in the next, uh, month or so, we'll know kind of what we stand on that and hopefully by spring we'll have okay, and prove the plant plans to do that. Uh, let's see here, the, uh, had a meeting with, uh, the other night down at the lineman school with the, uh, they, the businessman, the business people. Uh, they have a representative there that gave a report, uh, some of you I see in the room are there, and, uh, he, uh, didn't really tell us what we wanted to hear, I guess, but he's, he is, uh, they did a survey and they said we need more food chains up here, uh, you know, kinda surprised me a week, you know, but, uh, you know, they, I don't know exactly, uh, how they chose that company, I know that their expertise is in that, and want actually listing businesses and actually reviewing communities, uh, but I agree and I agree, it's supposed to be a profession, but we'll, we'll see what, how that, where they, how that leads us, but, but we, we're constantly after retailers and food chains. I figure Savelli spends a lot of time and time with that and meet more people, but, uh, anyway, the, uh, also had a meeting, Robert, uh, attended this with me, with the, uh, and Peter, uh, with the Chattanooga sewer, must convince the people, uh, so, uh, Peter's gonna give a report tonight. Uh, we do have a, a group that's interested in buying approximately three hundred acres plus in Northern County, uh, a major employer. They start, they actually came to the table with, uh, using approximately three million gallons of water a day, and three million gallons of sewer, now they've dropped it down to a million, uh, because Chattanooga, they've talked to us about, I mean, of course, taking the sewer. So we met with those people to find out, uh, you know, actually, if they could turn to me, uh, you know, plus what we're seeing them up there right now. And, um, they did come back yesterday with a figure, uh, this is something that, you know, it's an eight million dollar figure for them to bring into this, uh, that's on the Tennessee side, for them to bring into Georgia line where a tax is. So that's probably gonna be a deal worked. We, and we've submitted to Peter Vas, the company, and it'll be to them how much of that that they're, they're planning on, uh, or coming to table. We don't know what they are, don't know what they manufacture, you know, they're European company in Asia, Asian mix, but we really don't, it's kind of top secret thing, what they make. We'll, uh, we'll keep everybody informed on that as we know anymore. Peter, I don't know, he's, he's, he's been the man for making this, making this happen. Let's see. We had a meeting today, actually, uh, Robert, I met him with Walker here and, uh, met with, uh, actually, he's, uh, candidate for, you know, Secretary of State, he's actually a senator there also. But he brought up, uh, the fact that he actually served on the committee, still served on the committee of, uh, the water, uh, I guess you'd call it the water wars or whatever, you know, from over, uh, the state line dispute and, uh, the land affluence water, Tennessee River. Well, he, uh, he actually, you know, was, was one of the attorneys, uh, the representing Georgia, you know, that, and he's, he's really fired up, you know, over that, because there is still things going on about it. And, uh, he said that, uh, he felt, and, uh, he said he thinks Tennessee feels that if it went to a Supreme Court, federal court, that it'd be rooted, certainly, apparently, it wouldn't be, you know, Georgia lines. And he thinks that if that happens, it was part of an agreement or actually, um, some trading that would be going on in one county of Georgia to trade for that, that water rights, which would put us, the water rights, which would put us out in the middle of the river. Uh, it don't sound like a big deal, but if that happened, uh, maybe not my, my own town, but it would actually be, um, amazing thing for Dade County revenue points. And it would be a massive amount of revenue, you know, that would actually override our property taxes. Whether, whether it will ever come ahead or not, but I think that you'll see in your lifetime and coaching on it, that that land deal will happen. Cause the land sees now, uh, they, they gotta do something, especially when you grow out, cause they're gonna wait that one day to know what. But that's, that's something just going in there for the future. Y'all got anything else, Frank? We'll leave right on. Mr. Case? Mayor Case, you here or not?
He's not here, he's in City Hall.
Okay, we'll get him. Uh, Peter Savelli? He's the director, executive director of the Economic, Economic Development in Dade County. You better use mine. Appreciate Peter Beaker, now he, uh, he's, uh, he got some, you know, seemed like during holidays, you know, it's a bad thing, you know, for, he has the motor miles right now as we speak, he's, uh, slowly, you know, leaving.
She's doing well. Uh, but thank you for, uh, the opportunity to talk to, uh, you, uh, commissioners and people of Dade County. It's been a while since I've been here. I told you I'd come back here so often, uh, tell you what's going on. Things happen slowly, so there isn't a lot to report on a regular basis, uh, and so this is an opportunity to just talk about what's gone on for the last several months. We talked a little bit about retail, Ted mentioned that, uh, Industrial Authority hired a company called Next Site Three Sixty to do a retail, uh, marketing for us. A lot of folks in, in this, some of this room, uh, have tried to bring, uh, new business to Trenton in particular, uh, the retail side, and it's been hit and miss. Good effort, but facts are, we're not real experts in this business. And so, uh, given that Georgia Power signed a, the state contract with a company called Next Site Three Sixty, which allowed for a major discount to, uh, small communities such as ours, uh, we signed a contract with them to, uh, look at a couple of car, retail corridors in, uh, in our county, two in the city, Highway eleven, obviously, and US one thirty-six. And we said, well, let's also take a look at the corridor over two ninety-nine as well, where we have some of those truck stops, et cetera. They've done a great deal of demographic analysis, so I know more about the people in Dade County now than you do about yourself. I can tell you how many toothbrushes people buy, it's an amazing amount of information. You'd be surprised at what they gather about you, uh, what they know about your mobile phone usage, where you were, when, and how long it takes you to shop. And so all that data is available and, uh, if you wanna see it, it's, it's free to see, it's pretty boring, but we have it. But we've given it to developers, uh, we've given it to folks that are potentially interested in maybe building or opening a new business. We've had several restaurant chains in particular interested in, in the city of Trenton. For various reasons, they've been unsuccessful in, in closing the deal. Some have to do with our demographics, we're just not big enough, we don't have enough traffic, believe it or not, in some cases. And others, they can't find the right location that meets their business deal or they can't close the deal with your property owner. But there are and is a company, a retail restaurant that is very interested in Trenton and, uh, they're having a hard time making it work. And we'll try and do what we can for them. But also what our consultants do for us, and I'm a, you know, Ted will look at some of the facts in the report, I wrote the report with me. They go to, uh, conferences around the country that have to do with shopping centers, the ICSC, where they market communities. They'll bring data about our community, they'll talk to the people who run shopping centers, strip malls, et cetera. strip malls, et cetera, and say, "Hey, we got a fit for you, we'd like you to take a look at Dayton County and their other customers as well." Uh, at the Atlanta conference, they've been to Atlanta recently, and in Texas recently. At the Atlanta conference, there were like twenty-nine developers and tenant reps that they talked to about Dayton County. Uh, some have committed to come and drive through the county. Uh, they can't make them do that, but they've committed that they will come through. Uh, and most of them are looking at things that, uh, have to do with, and I'm gonna read this, uh, quick service restaurants, single tenant retail, discount junior box, backfill opportunities in existing shopping centers, and small multi-tenant developments. Those are the targeted areas that they think we have potential for. Uh, they make it clear that these deals take a long time to happen, uh, but we have somebody now who's doing it for real, knows how to do it, and, uh, we're hopeful. It's, uh, uh, we have a one-year contract that's renewable for two years, uh, we'll see how that goes. But, uh, at least I feel confident that we've got some professionals doing this, and we do keep track of them, and they give a, a weekly monthly status report, and as Ted alluded to, we had one of their people come down and talk to us. They didn't do quite as good a job as I would've liked in terms of telling the story, but, uh, we're getting back here, we'll be a little bit more. So, that's what's going on in the, uh, in the retail area. Um, on the industrial side, I wanna give a, a thank you to Senator Mullis. Uh, when we built the road for Vanguard, uh, we had to put a crossing across the railroad track, and that was very expensive. That was a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar crossing, uh, just for the railroad, I believe. Uh, we had already paid them about eighty-three thousand dollars, and they, they sent us a bill for another two hundred and seventy-three thousand, which I wasn't surprised. Uh, but, uh, we didn't pay them, and we asked them to come down and talk to us, uh, maybe we could negotiate that a little bit. Surprisingly, it did take more than ten minutes into that meeting, they said, "You don't owe us any money." We said, "Okay, we'll take that." Uh, and they said, "Maybe we owe you some money back." I said, "You're gonna pay us the money." Well, I didn't push for that small amount of money. Uh, but a month or so later, very recently, they said, "Oh, by the way, you owe us that two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars." And we said, "You know, we've already made some plans, uh, based on us having that in the budget, we don't have a lot of cash flow as an industrial authority." And so, uh, after discussions with the railroad, I figured it was time to ask our, uh, elected representatives to get involved. Uh, they do have a little more influence with Norfolk Southern than we do. And, uh, to make a long story short, uh, uh, we negotiated a hundred thousand dollar payment, and we're done. And so, I think that was a fair trade, not quite a third of the bill that we owe. Uh, the railroad has a deal with the senator, I don't know what that is, uh, not my business, uh, but we've agreed to pay them a hundred thousand, and, uh, we're done with our expenses to the railroad. It keeps us in a better financial place than it would've been if we had to pay the two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, that's a, that's a thank you to Senator Mullis. Uh, we've mostly been working on a couple of, uh, things for existing industry. Uh, we keep track, talking to our existing industries. Uh, they're doing fairly well, most of them, uh, and I'll, I'll be a little more specific about that. Uh, Lake Region or Intiger, they've changed their name to Intiger, uh, is putting in a new clean room. They've got two clean rooms ready for medical device manufacturing, and they're putting in another one, which is, it's, it's a real heavy investment on their part. They don't move those things once you put them in place, the, the complexity of dealing with the federal drug administration is pretty, pretty terrible. So, they're, they're investing a certain significant amount of money, they're putting in a clean room. Uh, Bull Bush, you may have noticed, some expansions over there, they put in a whole new wing to do, uh, fire sprinkler system, uh, work. Uh, we're happy to see that that's happening, that's a major investment on their part as well. And we're talking to some of our other existing businesses, industries that are thinking about potential expansions, there's always industry challenges, and so we continue to do that. I'm not gonna say who they are, because we never know what's gonna happen, and we may be misleading. So, on the exist, existing industry side, things are moving well, and maybe there are some potentials. On the new opportunity side, Ted alluded to one, he, he told you one, and I would've told you. Uh, and we keep talking to, uh, uh, people from the state, uh, as well as the Chattanooga Chamber. Chattanooga Chamber is a regional marketer right now, and they're very supportive of Dayton County, because they know what's good for Dayton County, it's good for Tennessee and Chattanooga. And so, they've been very supportive in some of our activities, uh, with the potential new industries in our community. Uh, yes, there are opportunities on the table right now, what will happen? Don't know. Uh, you don't get a lot of time to respond to these things, sometimes the demands appear great, and, uh, sometimes we want them, sometimes we don't want them. Uh, but, uh, we turn down some, uh, and say, "No, not interested." Uh, but, uh, there are people interested in Dayton County. We're located in the right place. Uh, we're close to a big city that also provides the ability in the region with our workers that come from more than just a small community such as ours. Uh, the Chattanooga Chamber does a good job of marketing, they know how to talk to new businesses, so they've been very supportive. And so, um, you know, things could happen, there are always opportunities, and we expect more opportunities will come our way. And so, um, on that note, that's all I'm gonna say tonight. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Question for Peter.
Good job, Peter, appreciate it. Spent a lot of time, helped one of you too.
Can I throw it out real quick?
Yeah.
Hey, you were talking about that company, you just, you know, the contract, I think, marketing Dayton County?
Yes.
You said they have a one-year contract with, uh...
Two-year deal.
...for two. What's their typical turnaround time of pulling off deal? Can they do it in that three-year?
They better.
Well, that would be dreadful.
There's no guarantee they will, because they can't make somebody say, "We wanna go to, to Dayton County."
What they, they'll, they'll be...
Uh, but they do, they do say, we're in, we're in a cycle now, a lot of companies have made their commitment for next year already, and so we're a little on the back end of that, in terms of their 2018 investments. But it doesn't mean they can't continue to talk, to say, "Hey, your next go-round, this is a city you need to consider, here's a place for you." And we showed them some of the places, they know where the land is that's available here. And there's more land available than you think in terms of vacant buildings or spaces or whatever, if you drive up and down, you can see where they are. So, uh, I don't expect anything to happen right away, I, I don't know. Um, they have a good reputation, uh, they're out of Birmingham, uh, they're doing work across the state, and actually contracted with Chautauqua County as well. Uh, Chautauqua County didn't quite get as good, uh, a deal as we did, because we waited until there was a subsidized contract before we signed with them, so I can't answer that a pro, uh, specifically, but it's gonna be better than what we could've done ourselves.
Thank you. What was that house that I got, do you remember what it was?
Seventy-five hundred dollars.
I was saying you ran by, I was saying...
Seventy-five hundred.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Or Shannon Sharpe, or, or Dayton County Library?
I think I am, I think. Okay. Um, we will be open, uh, on the, uh, night, uh, during the parade, and after the parade, um, we'll be have some opportunities for the children to come in and have a little play with Snow White and Belle. Um, and, uh, we have some crafts and things for the kids to do, um, also that day. We are in the middle of our construction project, they have the, um, recording studio almost done, we've just gotta start setting up the, uh, equipment and the sound briefing. So, hopefully, uh, I can give you a date of the time that it will be open in January, but we already have a lot of people saying, "I'm on the list, I'm on the list," so, uh, but in January, we should know the official date of that opening up. Um, and also, we have our tree out front, um, we have lots of hats and, um, scars and things on it, and, um, I know, you know, if you need it, you know, it's there. And we've already had a few people that have taken some items off of it, and we've gotten more donated, so, you're in your brain cells. But we have, um, a lot of people that donated some things for the tree and stuff, so, um, and I want to wish everybody a good Christmas, thank God for all this support and...
Right. Well, I know the Chamber's gonna come, they're sad of that.
They're sad, yeah.
They think, they think they're gonna help the county.
We've, uh, we don't have a float, we have, uh, two of our librarians, one from Ross School is editing, and she's getting mail, and then we have, uh, our, one of our children's person is Snow White, they're a professional, they do that, or parts, and so, so they're actually, uh, coming to do that, so, they'll be riding the parade, they're just in the back of the truck, I don't have time to do floats, so...
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you for the call. Ms. Painter, uh, Cheryl Painter, Dayton County Chamber.
All right, so this is our busy time, as he said, Saturday is what's kicking everything off. Saturday night, Sa- Saturday the ninth will kick off Dayton Discount Days. There's several businesses throughout the county you can go in to register at, you don't have to make a purchase, go in there, register. Um, nine o'clock, start setting up for vendors at Dayton County Hospital for the, for the Small Business Expo. If you're a vendor, if you're setting up, nine o'clock, ten o'clock is vendor to vendor. Ten o'clock, we open the doors to the public. They'll go to four o'clock. Inside, we have Greek pictures with Santa, we're having an ornament station so the kids can come make ornaments. Those ornaments will then be taken to the Silver Bells, and the Silver Bells, each bag will have an ornament for the kids in there to take to the elderly, so, um, there's seventy-two vendors, I think seventy vendors now, we've had a couple of them that aren't willing to make it. But it's gonna be huge, so y'all be sure to come in there. Everybody that comes in the door gets a bag, we have real nice bags for everybody to shop with. Four o'clock will start in the park, in Christmas in the park. Um, just found out today, we're having a problem getting the hot chocolate there, but we're gonna work on it, so, um, Matt Mayfield, there with State Farm, give it out free hot dogs, there'll be music, there'll be vendors set up there as well. Six o'clock kicks off the parade, if you're gonna be in the parade, you line up with the club, and door's gonna be at your boulevard at five o'clock, that will start the lineup. We'll have signs out there telling everybody where to go. If you're in a car, Jack Way, that, um, City Hall is where, is where you're gonna be lining up. The parade kicks off at six o'clock, it's, uh, the thirty-fifth, we've had people preach to us from Alabama, Chattanooga, all over, coming to be at the parade this year. And the Grand Marshal is Larry Moore, Larry Moore founded this parade back thirty-five years ago, so, he is our Grand Marshal, and that'll run the bar into for the year.
Any questions? Thank you. For the hard work, I'll pay everyone time back. And that, the visit, the visit that it's supposed to be, I, I went last year away from everyone, and it's just amazing to go there, and I mean...
It, it really is.
It's got a lot of people there.
We did start a new thing called City Lights, so if you have a business or if you have a storefront, we've got a huge, uh, Dayton Trophy that will go to the winner this year, Best Front Storefront, Street Front. We're trying to boost here a little tourism, get more people to come here. We're already working on the contest next year for, um, subdivisions and houses. They'll have a huge prize for that, and we're trying to really boost tourism, this is the time to do it, so, Christmas is the best time to get it going. That's what we got.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna have number four, uh, Don, if you wanna, uh, go over it.
All right.
Four, I appreciate it.
November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, General Fund had a balance of eight hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. General Fund is particularly positive on the hand of five hundred thousand, so, it's a total balance of one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Federal Asset Fund, due to its treasury, has a balance of zero. Share Special Fund, eighteen thousand, sixty-five dollars. Thrive Youth Education Fund, a balance of eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Jail Fund, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Federal Asset Fund Department of Justice has a balance of zero. Force Flexible Speeding Account, a balance of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. And our Payroll Account only has a balance of six thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. The SPOSS, two thousand fifteen SPOSS Projects Account has a balance of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars, and our SPOSS General Obligations, so, tax bond debt services account has a balance of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. The IDA Construction Series B Fund still has a balance of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. We're looking at the next report, uh, this is our income statement as of October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The actuals for October, we collected seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, we budgeted nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars, so we were, um, under budgeted two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And just so you know, that sounds alarming, however, a lot of that is, uh, based on historical tax information from the Department, the, uh, Janelle's Office. Some years it comes in fashion, some years it doesn't, so, a lot more probably will come in the month of December, uh, November and December. Year to date, we've collected three million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars, and we've budgeted three million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, fourteen dollars. So, again, um, under budgeted a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. We should be, uh, attained at thirty-three point three-three percent, so we're at thirty-four point nine-three percent. My two bad expenses. Again, that was actually the expense, I did, sorry about that, that was the expense, I just, you know, I kept forgetting, I think, uh, yes, I just upside down. Let's just start it. Uh, so, I just gave you the expense side, no wonder, I kept thinking, I don't think we were under, actually, two hundred and forty... Okay, so, let's just go with the current revenue. Current revenue, one point eight million dollars, we've recorded one million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. We've budgeted one million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, two eighty-five, so actually, we're over, we're in excess of twenty-three thousand. That sounds better. I was getting concerned myself that sitting here thinking, "Wait a minute, something's not adding up." Um, that's the first time it's happened in eleven years. Anyway, pardon me. For, uh, year to date, uh, we've collected three point, uh, two million dollars, three, almost three point three, three million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, and we have budgeted to collect three million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, so we're actually, we are in the inner excess of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is a thirty-three point six-four percent. So, then the expense side, seven, we spent seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, two thirty-three, budgeted nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four sixty-three, so we're actually under budgeted two hundred and forty-six thousand. And again, year to date, spent three hundred and forty, uh, four, three million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, three seventy-one, and had budgeted three million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, fourteen dollars, so we were under budgeted a hundred and fifty-five thousand, six forty-three. So, that's much better, sorry about that. Um, budget attained, like I said, was thirty-three point three-three percent, um, and revenues attained were thirty-three point six-four percent, expenses attained were thirty-four point nine-three percent, so, we're really in good shape. Better than I thought we were fifteen, five minutes ago. Okay. The next report is, uh, the General Fund Balance, she, by Department of Senate information broken down, just a little more specific, and then more specific is the Product Area Report, is six page report following that. As Commissioner Goff just read it a little while ago, our SPOSS, SPOSS looked down a little bit from the prior month. Local option sales tax, um, which we share with the city, uh, our portion was one hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and the SPOSS was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. So, again, that was now a little bit from October, but, um, these, these figures, again, they run a couple of months behind as they are given to us with the department revenue. The following report stays just a break in on SPOSS for your information. And then the General, um, last report in here is from Jane Morton. And as of eleven three, this is through, uh, October thirty-first... And as of eleven three, this is through, uh, October thirty-first, uh, we, she was collected at fifteen point zero eight percent. So, still got quite a ways to go. That's, you know, we've collected three hundred, six hundred seventy-one thousand, four ninety-one dollars. And, uh, she's, she's still got three point seventeen to go. And a lot of that will come in in the next couple of months. Close the report.
Okay. Jump over. Any questions?
Nope.
No, since everybody's, since you're straightening that one out the minute.
Yeah, I would like.
Any questions? All right, not, uh, I'm going to turn the motion to the President, I need him to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, motion, we, uh, do the day's reading.
Okay. Have a seat. Call up. Right?
Yes. Yes.
May it. Carry on, she is. Robert, you got any, anything, any label?
I don't know. Not that we've already discussed.
Reading of the minutes for last month's regular meeting and any special call meeting will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies, major public regular, labeled review and county commission office. Uh, minutes are also included in consent agenda. It's time to let Commissioner Towns go to consent agenda. Time of your time.
Another two. Okay, approval of the agenda as amended by the private probation service agreements to this agenda. Approval of the previous meeting minutes. Have the, uh, approval of review of the personal status reports presented. Approval proclamation for winter weather preparedness week, which is November twenty-sixth through December second. Resolution R dash thirty dash seventeen, board assessors, reappointment of Mr. Lamar Lowery. And that is for a four-year term in labor, it's a three-year term, yes. Uh, commencing January first, two thousand eighteen, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Have approval of resolution R dash thirty-one dash seventeen, the resolution for the appointment to the Region One Emergency Medical Services Council. That's a reappointment of, uh, Mr. Allen Case for a two-year appointment commencing January twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, expiring January twenty-third, two thousand twenty. And the resolution R dash thirty-two dash seventeen, a resolution to appoint members to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission. And that is a reappointment of Mr. Peter Stravelli for a one-year term commencing January first, two thousand eighteen, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Reso, uh, also have a resolution R dash thirty-three dash seventeen, resolution for appointment of members to the Day County Water and Sewer Authority. And that is for District One, for a four-year term of Mr. William Pullen, Colin and Billy Pullen, District. That commences January first, two thousand eighteen, expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Also have the purchase, SPOSS purchase for capital equipment for the West Brow Fire Department. Two thousand four, here's Quantum Fire Truck. It's expensive, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Other details there earlier. That is for SPOSS. That's resolution R dash thirty-four dash seventeen. As a resolution approved of the Agent Defense Agreement on Circuit, public defender offices of look at an fiduciary circuit. And the governing authorities of Catoosa, Chicago, Dayton, Walker Counties. That's for a one-year term. Resolution R dash thirty-five dash seventeen, a resolution to amend the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget. And that is a budget amendment to increase revenues, two hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty dollars for a grant received from FEMA. And also the expense line for the Capitol Alley Project, two hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. Resolution R X thirty-six dash seventeen, resolution approved of sale and disposal of county capital equipment as declared as surplus property. Which included two Crown Victorias, uh, both year model two thousand and ten. To be sold on dump deals. Also, uh, ordinance number twelve dash zero seven dash seventeen, amendment, amending the Day County Civil Erosion Seduction and Push Control Ordinance. Updating definitions as prepared by, uh, our attorney, uh, as presented by the state's ordinance. And this is our laws. And this is a second reading and adoption as of tonight. Then we have also the addition to the agenda, that is the private probation service agreement. It's three separate agreements. Uh, these are one-year term agreements with four additional one-year term available. For awarded Georgia probation services. And those are for Superior Court, Probate Court, and Magistrate Court.
Ready? Any corrections? Your comment? Our lieutenant motion to approve, consent agenda as presented. I have a motion. Motion approved. Second. Second. Call up. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
She made it.
Yes.
Carry on, she is. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, anyone want to come up and talk to us tonight? So, welcome to come up to the podium. Those are your concerns. So, y'all.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Huffman. Interested citizen, I suppose. Uh, Day citizens like to know about county government projects and their statuses. The radio listeners heard four minutes this morning about local athletic ban, illegal dump sites in this meeting tonight. And the newspaper readers have their hard copies. And there's a slight occasional tidbit of county government news on K V N TVs around town. But there is a segment of our citizen population that is screaming for representation. There are a few five-year-olds who don't have cell phones. And the time they were born, cell phones have become their electronic natties. Right there with them in the strollers, in the cars, in the rocking chairs. Those children don't know radio or TV, maybe Netflix or CDs. They will get almost all their news from online records and videos. This is the future and these are Day's future residents. But it's also going on now for over two thousand of our citizens. They are active online, active on social media, and that's how they're getting and want their news only. Shannon Whitfield of Walker County was quick to embrace this and realize its powerful impact. Using just a cellphone and a Facebook account, he sat in a chair in a room and talked directly to the people. And they talked back, asking questions and making comments that he could see and respond to in real time. No expensive recording equipment, just a cellphone. This meeting right here could be broadcasted and live and get to citizens who couldn't be here tonight. And in fact, it is being recorded live. Right now, today, people on Facebook have questions, but they are not getting answers from the commission. And especially from the owners of our districts. What news does Robert know about the reservoir project in District Six? I'm sorry. What news does Robert know about the reservoir project in District Three? What has Mitchell found from his talks with GDOT about the I fifty-nine north exit in his District One? And what is Scotty, if not here, saying about Wicken in District Two? I need your help.
About what?
Wicken, the dog? What's going on District Two? That's what the news is right now, so. I need your help. I'm asking for one or more of the commissioners to help these two thousand citizens. Get a Facebook account tonight, get involved in these discussions, including those on Village Idiot. And take the load off those who are doing their best to speak for and address commission issues. Like Jerry Hennecker, David Young, Cheryl Painter, Rex Harrison, Thomas Platt, Susie Talbot, et cetera, but our commissioners themselves. Since we have commissioners who are experts of their district, I recommend for this and other meetings, it should be part of the agenda. For each commissioner personally provide a status of the major projects in their area and anything else of interest going on there. Something we can put online. You guys are the smart team, that's what I told you, of Day County. Smart because if you look at your, the first initial of your first name, you spell out smart. Scotty, Mitchell, Allen, Robert, and Ted. You're the guys, the smart team in Day County. We'd like to hear what each member of the team is doing for us, not just one person. Number three, please video and post these meetings and TED Talks online, either using K W M T V or by designating someone to take out their cell phone. I appreciate your time and look forward to seeing you when we're ready.
Any questions?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Hope to come back every meeting. As I do everyone here. I've said it many times, more people here than just, uh, if they make it here with three people. Please come to all of them. All of them, hope you come back, get back in the group, you know, where you attend our meetings. And Dawn, I think you're working on a Facebook page.
Website.
Website.
I don't have a website.
So. Uh, anyone else want to come up, please?
My name's Ron Weeks and I've only recently kind of started paying attention to local politics. And I appreciate all you guys. I'm listening to what's going on here. We're talking about fire trucks and that's obviously a need. And the county has needs. But I kind of feel like a lot of times that maybe some wants and some wishes outweigh some needs when we start spending money and we start asking for tax increases. And there are a lot of citizens out here that are struggling. I'm in the grocery business. I say food stamps being, being spent every day and people hurting to feed their families. My parents, or my father, rather, had a stroke. He's, they spend over three hundred dollars a month on medication. They can't afford these extra taxes that are being asked of people. And I just want to ask you to focus on needs over wants. You know, we're talking about a lake being built or a reservoir. You know, I don't think that's a need that outweighs food and medication and things that citizens need. And there's a lot of other, I've got a lot of things. I went through the SPOSS accounts and I can sit here and rattle off a bunch of numbers, but that's not going to accomplish anything. I just want you to pay attention. Represent the people. Stop spending money on things that are unnecessary and unneeded. Don't ask for tax increases to fund a lake or any other purpose that we don't need as a county. And pay attention to what we're spending. I think that's what you're elected here to do. And I appreciate you. And there's a lot of hard decisions that have to be made here. So I'm not trying to, you know, I guess be ugly about it or anything like that. I just appreciate knowing that we're focusing on that. And one other little thing, you guys are described as a tight-knit group. And I don't know any of you personally. But I want to see some debate. If everybody agrees on everything, I don't know why we need five commissioners. I, may, maybe it happens behind closed doors or nobody sees it. I don't know. But, you know, I'd kind of like to hear some discussion and some disagreement. And, you know, we talked about spending a lot of money, uh, some people that, you know, like I said, if everybody's got the same viewpoint, then we only need one person, not five. And that's all I'm going to get into right now. I appreciate it.
I tell you though, let me comment on a couple things. One thing, we're talking about, uh, spending money on wants and not needs. You, you go back as many years as you want to, look at projects, you know, take time to do, look at the projects that we've actually spent money on. And, and you'll see that we don't, man, that's something with the priest, we don't, we don't just, we don't do wants. We've walked this county a long way in the last few years, you know. Uh, we've had, I've seen that happen before in the past. And I, I welcome you to come in this office and you spend some time with Dawn and go back and you look at anybody and you look at what, the way we spend your money. We're very conservative with money. That's why, that's why we are going to lower tax, uh, living where I'd say our state of order. We're a size county, we are. And so, you know, and I appreciate you and I hope you, you really get involved and start coming to these meetings. Oh, you said you've been here, I think, five years, six years, you know.
Correct.
It's time young people do get involved in this. And we're not, we're not young people, we're not. You know, and we've got to have people step up to play, just like trying to find a person's circle and it's not going to bore you. Uh, you know, it don't sound like them boring, boring, it isn't boring. Well, it's a board that praises your property, actually. I mean, praise your property where they actually determine the move, right? So, you know, we're, we're asking people to step up to the plate and get involved. We don't, we sure don't mind it. We're open doors, a hundred percent. And, and hopefully in the near future, we will actually, uh, like a better effort here on the website and also do a Facebook page or whatever, you know, whatever page. We know we're living in a different time and community, that's it. There's nothing to hell about that. So we appreciate y'all being here. Appreciate everyone being here. And hopefully we'll have more people next week, I mean, next month. We got plenty of people in law, just like even. So, I appreciate y'all being here. Appreciate your confidence and everything. Anyone else want to talk to us tonight? Appreciate it. You're with the press, you don't get a, you don't get a chance.
Sorry. I'm sucking my foot.
Check your patch.
Hey, um, if you guys know me, I'm Summer Kelly. And, um, I am not really even sure that there's anything that you guys can do about this issue. I'm not even sure, because I don't think anybody can do about this issue right now. I mean, to be honest, one of my family members is showing you guys should just move. And I really would hate to do that because this is the house I grew up in. Um, a lot of things have changed in our, in where we live, in the Big Woods area, on Sam Mountain. And, um, there are more people around us than there used to be. Yet, we have a problem stepping foot outside of our house anymore. And, um, the last few years during hunting season, you know, you can hear the guns going off, you can hear everything happening. Um, we've had a couple of close, you know, I guess not close, close problems, issues in the woods and stuff. So usually about the time that deer hunting season starts, we tell my kids, I have seven and a half acres, three and a half bit is cleared, the other four is not. The unclear area is along the back of our property for the most part, a little bit, a little strip down the side. And we get to the kids, not to, you know, not to go in the woods, stay away from it. But we have, they have pets and they wander often there. And, um, a couple of, a couple weeks ago, um, well, I guess about a month ago, my son was out, was like right, actually was right before the beginning of deer season out in the woods. And the next thing we hear is a gunshot and he comes flying out of the woods and he was in sideline of my house. Like we could see him from the house. And a bullet hit the tree next to him and bounced off, ricocheted off the tree. The next thing I know is my husband is with me last week and we're sitting in our bedroom talking and there's a loud gunshot and the bullet hits the house and ricochets off the house. We call law enforcement because my husband is running outside and to see because, you know, the trees are down, we're hoping that our leaves are all down and hoping he can see. And there was a person out carrying a rifle around, but by the time law enforcement got there, they went back in the house, flipped the rifle, it came back out and told law enforcement that they heard the shot, so they came out too. Even if we put cameras up, I mean, there's not a good chance, I mean, you don't have to be within a sideline to shoot a bullet into the property. And I'm the last person to tell anybody else what to do on their property. But there's a problem when we can't have, you know, you don't even feel comfortable letting your kids, you know, and it, it hit the side of our house. So we're not even talking from the backyard. And, um, there's a problem when you're concerned about your kids being in the yard. And our neighbors across the street will practice shooting at night in the backyard. By the time we call law enforcement, they're back inside again. You know, I mean, I know there's not a lot you can do about it. And, you know, law enforcement's like, you know, it's kind of your word against theirs. And if the camera's out, I mean, they're not going to catch somebody shooting at the house, you know, or shooting toward our home. And I don't know if, what there is that you guys can do about it. It just doesn't seem like it's very safe that we just have to keep believing that one day when I'm trying to get in my car, when my kids are going to get up to the ricochet or something, you know, or one of, you know. We have more property damage than what we have now. And the ricochet, the house, I mean, loud enough for us to hear it inside, but not, you know, any major damage. But what if they come through the window or something? I mean, it's, it's a little, it's just concerning to me that we sit in the house now and the guns are going off and you're waiting on something to come through the window anymore. So, I don't know. I mean, to, to my way of thinking, if you're going to be hunting within a certain amount of a house, you should be letting most people know. And guess what? We're out here, we're out here hunting. But there should be at least, you know, if you're hunting on your own property, you shouldn't be able to go near other people's homes. You know what I'm saying, that there should be a, oh, where did somebody do this house, we can't, you should be in protection or something. I don't, I mean, like I said, I don't want to tell other people that to do on their property, but the safety concern at this point, so. Anyway, that's.
Right, Sheriff, so you, the, the guy, the actual person, you think did it, you think he shot it off his porch? So you saw him?
No, no, he was, no, we saw him, he actually has a home back a little bit further from ours, and there's a long driveway. And he parks his car at the front start of his driveway, so you can't, law enforcement couldn't even get through to get to him. And he walks, my husband watched him walk the whole thing, and my husband was like, hey, hey, but he didn't want to, you know, approach him. And when law enforcement got there, and he had come back out of the house, but at this time, he's empty painted, and he actually, because my husband was finally like, as he's going in his house, it's like, I'm calling the police. So I came back, and he was like, no, I heard the gunshot too, I came out to see what was going on, and we're like, no.
And that's, that's one hit the house?
Yeah. Yeah, it ricocheted off the house. So we know it hit the house because our entire, our deck is solid wood, and it's a good-sized deck, and the deck, like, you know, was like thud. And, you know, you can feel the vibration, because the deck is right outside our window. And, you know, we have searched up and down so that we could be like, you know, the house has been there a while, you know? I can't say for sure that the wood is weathered and all, that, you know, you would think there'd be a white nick or something, there's a bunch of nicks. I just don't know which one came, you know? It's, it's just concerning, because this isn't the first time, you know, especially this year, that we've been having that issue. So, I know my husband, my sister had been out there with one of the dogs just walking on our property. And they had hunting lines set up not too far from our property line, and they were shooting. And he was trying to yell at them, hey, there are people back here, because he was trying to help the kids find one of our dogs. Was back there, and they were concerned about it. And my husband's like yelling, hey, hey, there are people here, and they just kept on shooting. You know, so sure, walking onto their property and complaining about it, which you really don't want to do if they're not paying attention, you know, are ready to what they're doing. So I don't know what the rules are about that. It's just, you know, our house isn't like in an isolated wooded area. We have two houses straight across the road from us, and we're not set that far back from the road, you know? So, I mean, what if it hits a car going by, or, you know? You know, there's like a hundred things that could happen with where they're shooting, you know, where they're going to hunting at, yeah. So, that is.
We'll maybe let the sheriff handle it and just say, you know, what, we can go about this rate of that, as far as law.
Right.
We'll see, kind of, because I knew, you were the first one to do this about this, it's actually compliant, I mean, in the county, sixty years, you know?
Well, and I think that mostly, you know, even when my parents were there, like I said, we had more houses that were built. And so, a lot of the people around them didn't hunt, and now we have a bunch of people that do, and they want to hunt in the woods behind our house, which is fine. Our property is kind of situated in the middle of them. So they're constantly, you know, going back and forth, and then past the neighbor that did hunt would come and tell my parents, hey, I'm going to be on the property, near the property hunting. We have new people there, and not everybody is nice enough to let you know, and that's a little scary for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else tonight? Not real long. Y'all got anything else you want to add? No, I'm going to hang up. Motion to adjourn. I think I'll just adjourn. Seven, two, call up. Gray?
Good.
Dawn?
Yes.
May? Cherry or cheese? Appreciate anyone being here tonight, and as I said, I hope you come back. First Thursday of everyone. Appreciate the concern brought to us tonight. Friday afternoon, instead of eating cookies or whatever, I'll be back there.